Good evening, this is the Ogden City Council meeting for February 3rd, 2013. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present. First item on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We will now observe a moment of silence. Next up is approval of minutes. First is minutes of the closed executive session of July 19th, 2012. Councilmember Van Hoosier.
Thank you Chair Blair. These minutes are fine. I've read through them and they're all up to date and I feel like it's a, that they're correct.
And the minutes of the regular meeting of June 19th, 2012. Councilmember Wicks.
Those are correct except for on page 13, line 12, the plural possessive of my last name should be W-I-C-K-S with an apostrophe instead of W-I-C-K apostrophe S. But other than that, they're fine. So I would make a motion to accept them with that one minor change.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier to accept the minutes of the, I messed this up, the closed executive session of June 19th, 2012, and the regular meeting of June 19th, 2012. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up is public hearings. First up is the Canyon Waterline Bonds.
We have Mr. Mike Goodwin here. I also see Laura Lewis back in the peanut gallery, so I don't know if Laura's going to participate, but I know Mike's going to give an overview.
Chair Blair, councilmembers, the public hearing that we will be having at this time is in relation to a proposed issuance of water bonds that would be used to fund the Ogden Canyon Pipeline Project. On January 8th of this year, the council adopted a resolution, a parameters resolution, which approved issuance of up to $6 million in bonds for that purpose at not more than 3.5 percent for a period of not more than 25 years. The public hearing this evening is to receive any kind of public input relating to that parameters resolution and the bonds that we intend to issue. I'd be glad to answer any questions before the public hearing if you have any.
And just clarification, this is the final authorizate, final amount, right?
Yes. This, this will be the amount needed to complete the project in its entirety.
We will now open the public hearing for the Canyon Waterline Bonds. Any takers?
Seeing no movement, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing for the Canyon Waterline Bonds from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Hare. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll move on to G Avenue Budget Amendment.
That will be handled by Laurie Johnson.
This is Johnson.
The purpose of this action is to transfer a portion of the remaining funds from a Public Services CIP project in the amount of $26,000 to a general fund account within the Public Services Department, Special Supplies and Asphalt and Oil, which would be used to upgrade Avenue G. And so the increases the general fund by 26,000 and decreases the CIP fund by the 26,000 for an overall net effect to the fiscal year 2013 budget of zero as a whole. Are there any questions? I know that you've had some explanation, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions on the project or on the budgeting, how this works, the transfer if needed before the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this has been going on for quite a while, hasn't it?
This one has.
And this has been a project that's needed for a very long time.
So we will now open the public hearing for the G Avenue Budget Amendment.
Seems there's no public input on this. I will move that we close the public hearing on the G Avenue Budget Amendment.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Garner and a second from Councilmember Wicks. This is a roll call vote. Er, sorry, sorry. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Discussion?
Seems there's no further discussion. I'll also move that we adopt this ordinance, proposed ordinance 2013-3.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2013-3 from Vice Chair Garner and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gardner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes. Next is the Ogden Weaver Applied Technology College Street Vacations.
Mr. Montgomery will be presenting.
Mr. Chair and members of the council, you have before your time a consideration from the Planning Commission regarding vacation of the streets and plat, or plats that make up the present campus site of the Ogden Weaver Technical College. Little history on this, back in the 1889, 1890s, this plat and a couple of the plats were recorded outlining the development of this area. And as you notice in this plat, you have streets and alleys and lots and all sorts of things configured. Even the word is the territory. We weren't even a state when this was platted. But that has continued on for years and years. Back in 1986, the city undertook to vacate the streets and plat of this area. And for some reason, while the city council actually approved that vacation, it was never recorded. And so from that time on, as we've dealt with, you may recall, street names and those type of things, it was based on the plats that had existed back then, that these were city streets. And not until we received a petition lately to vacate this did we, as we did a research find that, we actually acted on this in 1986, but it was never recorded at the county. So this is really coming back and saying, we have no interest in the streets or alleys or the subdivision as it exists, because if you take a look at the campus as it now sits, it doesn't relate to any of those streets or lots. And it is in the best interest of everyone to have these, these areas vacated, so that within the boundaries of the campus, that you can have it all as one entity rather than the several subdivisions that presently exist there. So the recommendation from the Planning Commission is, it is appropriate. There's not a public need for these streets. Again, as you look where the buildings sit, the streets are in the middle of the buildings. And that to vacate the plats, streets and alleys would be an appropriate action.
Okay.
I have a question. This is all state property currently.
Correct.
And so they're going to do what they want.
Correct.
Aside from what we have in our records anyway, is that correct?
Correct.
This has nothing to do with the other street issue we had a few months ago?
No. This is really to try to clean up all this, because as we got into that, we realized all these things existed and we just need to clean it up. Any other questions?
Okay, we will now welcome public input on the Ogden Weaver Applied Technology Street, Technology College Street Vacations.
Seeing no movement, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Hi, or Councilmember Hare. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this ordinance.
I second it.
We have a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2013-4 from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Stevens. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gardner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes. Next up is Fire Station Improv, Fire Station Number Two Improvements Budget Amendment.
Chair, Laurie Johnson will make the presentation on the budget amendment. And if there are questions about the fire facility, we have Chief Matthews here who's willing to answer any questions.
Thank you. The purpose of this action is to transfer $1,144,560 of prior year medical services fund balance to the fiscal year 2013 Capital Improvement Fund for fire facilities improvements and as just mentioned, for the retrofit and remodel of Station Number Two. And just as a note, this is a use of prior medical services fund balance. And within your notes, there was, I gave you at the end of the transfer and at the end of fiscal year, with this transfer, the projected fund balance would still be $2,933,749. Any questions on the budget transfer and the budget part of this?
It's my understanding that the funds, the 1.1 million, would not necessarily need to be paid back to the medical services, is that correct?
No, because of the way that Chief Matthew explained in the transmittal, these ambulances are used from each one of these stations, so it's, they feel like it's a good use of the medical services fund balance. It would not have to be repaid from the general fund.
And Laurie, just for, I guess, public information too, we were pursuing grants and other avenues for this and...
Right. As Chief Matthew explained, the cost ratios of those grants, the criteria had changed. And I, just upon reading his information, he'd done every due diligence he could to get those grants in order to cover these costs if possible in previous time, which had been used before. Any other questions? Thank you.
I haven't planned on having the chief make a presentation, but if you have specific questions, he can address those.
Chief, do you want to say?
Never offer the chief an opportunity to speak.
Counselor Chair and the council members, thank you. This is a very needed project. I've tried for four years to secure a FEMA grant to do something similar that we did to Station Five back in '06, '07, and without success. They've changed the criteria and unfortunately for public safety buildings such as a fire station, we just don't meet the criteria anymore for the cost benefit analysis. So we've just got to find the funds somehow on our own. The station is similarly situated as Station Five was, built almost 45 years ago. It was built for one gender firefighter. We've tried to do some remodeling and updating the facility as best we can, but it really needs a major overhaul, not only seismically, but for the comfort creatures and the, just the overall functionality of a fire station. Station Five received an award after Care Corporation completed that project back in '09 as a very prestigious award for projects under $2 million that was done very efficiently and effectively for a critical facility. And it just shows that I think with the use of these dollars, amount of dollars, it's a very wise investment for the city of Ogden to provide a fire station that will last for many years to come without completely rebuilding it or starting over.
Chief, could you also explain where the fire equipment and the personnel will be housed while the work is being completed?
Yes, I can. Thanks to our Public Services Director over there, he's been so gracious to allow us to stay in some of his facilities, which is just off of Monroe Boulevard and 20th Street at the cemetery. It's going to be somewhat of a compromise. It's not going to be a perfect situation, but we've, we've got some bids on some temporary housing that we can put our firefighters within. We'll keep the fire engine outside during the daytime and then we'll place it inside at night for more security purposes rather than other types of protection. The ambulance that's normally located at Station Two will be moved down to the main station, just because it's too cramped to put both response vehicles up at the cemetery. But at least this way, the first response medical capacity will still be in the neighborhood and the fire response capacity will still be in the neighborhood for the immediate response for emergencies. And that was one of our paramount concerns, was making sure we still had someone in that neighborhood to protect that district while the construction was being completed. And this was the closest facility, a city-owned facility. It's, it's got backup power because it has a generator already at the facility, which will provide us backup power for the operation of the, this fire, temporary fire station.
Chief, I was delighted that you mentioned that the, this is an investment in the safety of our community, because if we can upgrade this station with the same techniques and expertise that we did in Station Five, then that puts us even further in protecting the community with, with our fire department.
This, this lines up with the management audit of 2007 in regards to a significant evaluation and analysis of our fire facilities and making those improvements that are needed. And as this will mark, the second facility will have made significant improvement. And you also are aware that we've acquired some land for the replacement of Fire Station Three, also in concert with what the recommendations of the audit came through with. So we're, we're real excited about moving forward with some of these facility improvements, so we've got some fire facilities that'll last for years to come.
And I think one of the largest threats we have as a community would be the potential for a devastating earthquake, and you would want your fire station to be standing in the event of a disaster like that, so...
And one of the reasons we received the FEMA grant in the first place, but for some reason, we just don't fare as well. They've changed the criteria for eligibility, so we just don't compete as well as we formerly did.
The other question I have, with the renovation of Station Five and also with the possibilities of doing Station Two and rebuilding Station Three, does that add to the increase in morale among our employees in the fire department?
Very much so. It's, it provides them that, not only, not only with a better working environment, because they do spend a significant amount of time there, but it also shows to them that the city as a whole is very concerned about their working environment and their safety and their needs, and that makes them feel a lot better about their employer. So yes, very much so.
We will now accept public input on the Fire Station Number Two Improvements Budget Amendment.
Seeing no movement, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Garner to close the public hearing. This is a roll call vote, or voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other?
Chair Blair, I would make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance 2013-5.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Wicks to adopt proposed ordinance 2013-5 and a second from Councilmember Hare. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gardner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes.
You know, he'll be started on it tomorrow.
I'm, I'm hoping he's not going to do the work.
And I'm sorry I didn't recognize State Representative Jeremy Peterson earlier, but we'd like to welcome you and recognize you for being here tonight. Great. Next up is reports from administration.
The first item of the budget carryforward will be done by Laurie Johnson.
Really not trying to delay the meeting by walking so far, but I need the exercise, so I appreciate your indulgence. The carryover is a regular part of your process, and what we're doing is requesting that you accept for review the fiscal year 2012 end-of-year carryover budget adjustments. And that would include a Schedule A for revenues, appropriations and encumbrances, and then the appropriations and carryover type funds. And I just want to reiterate, this is a normal part of the process, and the fiscal year 2013 budget ordinance allows for this carryover and that it will increase the city budget in the amount of just under $38 million because of the carryovers. And I would be, just request that you accept this report for review, and we'll discuss it later in the work session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept this item for review.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Garner to accept the fiscal year 2012 end-of-year carryforward budget adjustments for review. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Chair, we're delighted to have Chair Story from the Ogden School District Board and also our Superintendent Brad Smith here. This next item will be presented by a ward, and also Superintendent Smith will also participate in that presentation.
Mr. Chair, members of the council. The item before you is to adopt a resolution that authorizes the administration to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Ogden School District to facilitate the development of a new elementary school for the D school area. And it will also facilitate the development of the existing D Elementary School site. So that's, that's the, that's the item that's before you. And a little bit of background to start, the, the D Elementary School boundaries are shown in red, and this area, at the heart of that area is of course the D school. A little bit of background on, on the area. It, the residential area that we're, that we're talking about is essentially the, the area just east of Washington Boulevard. It's a neighborhood that is, an existing neighborhood developed from the 1880s up through the 1930s approximately, and has gone through neighborhood cycles several times. It had, after the 50s, it had a number of apartment intrusions and conversions of units to multiple dwellings and, and a fair amount of disinvestment and owner occupant shift to rental occupants of many of the units. So that now we have 16, and I'm not talking about the entire D school area, I'm just talking about sort of the neighborhood that's at the heart of where the D school is, sort of around the D school, just east of Washington Boulevard, up to say Monroe. It currently has an occupancy rate of about 16% owner occupants. 46% of the residents there are below the poverty line. And for the past few decades, the 30 years that I've been involved with Ogden City, we've, we've had a number of initiatives to try and help this neighborhood. It was designated as a rainbow neighborhood, one of our initial targeting efforts, and a lot of investment went into the neighborhood. It was a weed and seed area in the 90s and over the past decade. That was a Department of Justice grant, a number of community plans, down zoning to reflect the use, a number, a fair amount of investment in renovation, new construction of homes and various things like that. Over the past few years, there have been a design charrette by the city and UDA, the Architecture Group, to try and figure out what type of future there might be for this area, what amenities there are that can be captured and potential there could be. And just to set the context, it's, it's within a block or two of the, the River Project. It's just south of the cemetery and just east of the downtown, particularly the, the temple, which is undergoing renovation, so it's kind of in that halo. And so we have an opportunity to capture some of that momentum as well. The D school, the current D school is, as Superintendent Smith will discuss with you in a few minutes, is, doesn't function well and has been slated for replacement for several years now. And one of the challenges has been to locate a site which is suitable for this, this feeder area and to not get that site too far to one edge or the other and to facilitate the walking and, and also to create an opportunity for a community asset, something that can be a community center and add to the vibrancy of the, of the, and the redevelopment of this neighborhood, which it so needs. So one of the challenges that we constantly face in these types of neighborhoods is that there are things that are sort of log jams that we need to break that, that stop the, or create the perception that it's not a good place to invest, or not necessarily a good place to live, or a place that may be less desirable to live and invest. So we see this as a game changer. Removing the school that doesn't function, putting it in a very visible location which can synergize with city facilities and city functions and create a, a community asset in addition to an educational asset. And then also that starts a few other dominos dropping where the D school site can be converted, the current D school site can be renovated into housing and, and other things that we can do through our redevelopment efforts to try and fix up and repair the infrastructure and some homes that might need help and, and work with the residents there on, on the services that they need. So that's the, that's kind of behind the issue in terms of why we're recommending a partnership with the district. The interlocal agreement that we're proposing to, that we entered into would have the district purchase a five acre site on the east half, excuse me, the west block, and you can see it of course in the yellow highlighted area. It's just west of the Liberty, current Liberty Park between 21st and 22nd Street. That acquisition is authorized by and is going to be done pursuant to the state law requirements. They would also finance the land and the construction costs of the new school. They would construct the school with the anticipated opening in the 15 to 16 school year. And then they would also transfer the D school, the current D school property to the city so that we could then facilitate some redevelopment on that parcel as well. And that we would have to appraise that property and enter into a, a purchase agreement. And that would take place in the next, probably another two years, three years from now after the school transition, so in, in January of 2016. And the city's responsibilities under this interlocal agreement would be to act as the acquisition agent for the district to help them with their acquisition process. We have experience in this regard and can help them facilitate the, the purchase agreements and negotiations and help walk them through the, walk the owners and the residents through the, the process that's outlined in the state law. That we would also modify the 2100 block of Madison Avenue to create a, a transfer or, or some kind of a traffic calming so that the park could be used in conjunction with the school. And also to provide drop off and pickup areas for the, for the school. We would undertake a design process to modify the Liberty Park to basically redesign its functions so that it can function with the school and also create better recreational opportunities. Right now, it's kind of a hodgepodge and has been, it's, it's got the old formal, formal park design and, and needs to be redesigned. So that's another element that we think is appropriate. And then of course, that our role would be to purchase the D school and then proceed with development. Just quickly on the schedule that is anticipated, the acquisition would take about a year through the 13 year, and the financing is waiting in the wings. We're waiting for our, our agreement to be signed and the, the funders are aware of the project and are, are waiting to proceed. and are waiting to proceed with applications and things for the financing. That's something that's imminent as soon as we make decisions whether to proceed. The design work would be up through May of 2014 and construction from May of 14 through August of 15. So, of course, the school would be operational in the fall of 2015, according to what we're trying to do. Just a quick note on the acquisition and relocation laws and procedures. Of course, the state law has provisions for how acquisitions are taken care of. Anytime a government entity purchases property, there's a state law that rules the procedures and it involves notification of owners and appraisals and working through a method of making offers and having review appraisals and consulting with the Property Rights Ombudsman, which is a free attorney service that the state provides for owners to participate and get a third party legal review. And also a mediation service in case there's any kind of negotiations that need to take place. So that's something that we would end up facilitating. There's a relocation benefit that's also offered to owner occupants and to tenants. And that's driven by the Utah law, which has adopted the Uniform Relocation Act, which is a federal law. And that also provides for notification and investigation of the needs and wants of the residents and typically involves some cash payments for moving costs as well as differentials in rent based upon where they're currently at and where they end up moving. And it also takes into account income and ability to pay and that kind of thing so that people end up equal to where they're at, from where they're at to where they go. And sometimes that assistance can last as long as 42 months. So it's designed to take care of the needs of, obviously, the renters and many of which could be lower income individuals. So it's a process that we're well aware of and we've done before. And there's consultants that we also work with on the relocation side. And before I turn the mic over to Superintendent Smith, I just wanted to cover, again, just to kind of reiterate the community benefits. We were recommending this after spending a significant amount of time trying to look at issues in this neighborhood and trying to figure out what are the game changers. And of course, the school is one in introducing new housing, redesigning the park, creating a focal point, which we think this school can be. And then also to try and capture the momentum that's occurring downtown and see how far we can bring that into the neighborhood through other redevelopment efforts is, it's very important and a very significant thing at this point in time. Other sites have been considered and it's not that this is the one that just we pulled out of a hat. It's the design process that we went through with UDA, the, out of state architecture firm that helped kind of go through the charrette, the investigation that we've done. It looks like this is the best site with the least cost. Being able to make use of the park reduces the amount of land that's needed to be purchased. And it also creates an opportunity for a highly visible facility that can be a community asset. So our recommendation is that the council adopt the resolution. And I'll turn the...
Actually, Ward, before you turn it over, can I ask you two quick questions? You know, with the D school purchase, is that standard real estate practice that the purchaser picks up the appraisal cost?
In our case, it's fine. It's a matter of a few thousand dollars. And it's our, you know, it's our negotiation point to cover that. We need to investigate what we can do with the property and so it's our thing to research.
Well, they didn't want to split it with us?
No, and that's...
Just checking. And then, just my other question, I know you touched on the park improvements. Is there a plan yet for what the city intends to do?
I think that will come about next week when we come in with the CIP plan. There'll be more information on next Wednesday, Tuesday night.
True. I think that a quick answer might be that we have ideas about how to proceed with the design process and the improvement process. So that's really pretty much where we're at at this point.
I have a couple of questions also. Is it appropriate for us to expand on the financing, how this is going to be financed? And also, could you expand on how we're notifying the property owners and the renters in that area?
Again, the financing, for the most part, the city's investment is relatively minor in comparison to that of the district. And so we're anticipating using funds that we currently have for the city side and, of course, CIP requests for the public improvements. The district has mechanisms for bonding and coming up with funds to finance schools. And so it's really their financing mechanisms. We're aware of one, a unique way of financing that we've made the school district aware of, and that's the New Markets Tax Credits, which can help to generate some equity that can make a difference in the land acquisition cost. That's basically what it comes down to. It can help to provide extra cash that's not borrowed to help with the land acquisition. So that's one of the reasons that this type of site works in this case.
So as I understand it, you mentioned that the city has funds already set aside, plus we will use CIP funds for this, for our responsibility to that.
Right. And then you talked about notification of property owners. There's legal notices that are predicted by the state law. And we've drafted those and prepared those and they're currently at the district awaiting translation so that we have both a Spanish and an English version. And those are predicted by state law. So, and those are sent to the owners and then, of course, the renters, we have to get a rent roll and work with renters and identify who the renters are. But we do know who the owners are. And so when we enter into our acquisition agent agreement, we'll then begin making notification to the property owners and tenants.
Sometimes there's a one-on-one visit with these owners?
Absolutely. In every case, there is, yes. And then, of course, we, one of the things I want to reinforce, because sometimes there's a hesitancy or a tendency to, it's a stressful thing to talk to owners about moving and tenants about moving. And so we're encouraged and will offer the ombudsman's services so that they don't feel like they're being strong-armed. There's always a third party entity they can go to and get free legal advice. And the ombudsman's office is designed to watch over these kinds of transactions. And the ombudsman's office knows about this project. We've brought it to them and talked to them about it, told them that it might be coming so that they're aware of it and they're aware of the process that will be followed and they've given us some instructions as well.
On the site of the old D school, do we want that with the building or without it?
The agreement that we're currently entertaining is that we would take the building and take the responsibility. Of course, that would be seen as either an asset or a liability based upon how the appraisal goes.
That was my question, is if it becomes, if we don't want it with a building and it ends up costing us money, you know, it won't work out too good.
Right. And it is what it is. It's an asset that there may be value that, in our view, it doesn't warrant a reuse. And the best thing for that site would be a housing subdivision. And we think that we could do about 25 homes in there.
Could that be negotiated as part of the purchase, that that be demoed prior to that purchase?
It would have, it would factor into the acquisition cost. And so it could. What we're offering is that we're trying to help the district...
I guess it's a wise, I guess maybe that's the better question, you know, I...
And I think we're equipped to be able to handle the demolition. One way or the other, the cost would be borne in the development. What we really wish is we could find the steering wheel so we could just turn it on and fly it away.
That would be nice, wouldn't it?
When you're looking at the property that we're going to acquire, does that mean we're going to split that block in half? Because that's the historic value of that neighborhood is the size of the blocks that are there. So I guess what I'm looking at is that middle line that comes down through, will there be a street through there so that it would...
It's possible, in order to create building lots and fill that up. And we've looked at a number of different scenarios, you know, higher density or trying to clump things into a...
I'm talking about the school site.
The current school.
New one or the old one?
Oh, the new one.
The new school site.
The, and the district is obviously responsible for the final design, but they need entrances and accesses and parking and various things like that. So there probably will be some entrances that come off of 21st and 22nd Street and go into the, into the site. I'd like to turn the time over to Superintendent Smith.
Chair Blair, members of the council, I'm grateful to be here this evening. If I could tell you a little bit about D Elementary and its population. As we sit here tonight, I have 435 students enrolled at D Elementary. Of those 435 students, 76% are ethnic minority students. 100% of the students that attend D Elementary School are from impoverished families, every single student that attends. 49% of the school are English language learners. The school has made remarkable progress in the past year with their education they offer for the students of that district. You can see in front of you what is frankly the bizarre design of an educational institution. It is a monolith of cement that is seismically unstable and from the day it opened, was not suitable for the instruction of children. It is without walls internal to that school. We cannot put up walls without a five or six or seven million dollar investment because of the heating and air conditioning system. It's simply unsuitable and yet miracles happen in that school. With an appropriate environment, I believe that school will be the highest performing elementary school in the state of Utah, perhaps in the western United States. And it's, that's the issue we have as a school district. We had planned, six years ago, that this school would be replaced as part of the bond. The bond was, prices for the schools that were part of that bond crowded this one out. This was the lowest priority that was included in the bond. Prices changed, costs changed, it was crowded out. It's now the next school to be replaced in our district. The intent for the replacement of D Elementary is to look at the creation of a STEM magnet school. The students that attend D Elementary have too few opportunities for STEM education because of their particular station in life. They have relatively modest opportunities for engagement with students from other parts of the district. Our hope would be to build a school of approximately 650 students. That would be a STEM magnet. And we would be bringing approximately 250 students from other parts of the city into this neighborhood on a daily basis for education. We would also hope to include a community center as part of this school. Our present design include having a portion of the school that can be physically segregated from the remaining portion and remain open into the evening to facilitate a Boys and Girls Club or other community school activities. That's our hope for the D replacement. The alternative, or pardon me, we then come to the question of where should it be located? And can you make this go back to the D area map?
And Mr. Superintendent, while we're waiting just to do that real quick, will you just say what STEM stands for so the public understands it?
Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics. Thank you for how quickly we learn the educational jargon even when we're not from that area. I apologize. You can see the map of D Elementary. The vast majority of the students that attend D Elementary come from east of Washington. And that's obvious from the residential. There's a small residential portion that's on the north central end between Washington and Wall, but the vast majority come from the neighborhood in which the school is located. Many walk. Because they are 100% students of poverty, many parents don't have the wherewithal to transport their kids to school. Many students simply are unable to have other ways to school. I hate to be the poster boy for this, but of course, we all know we have an obesity epidemic in this country. One contributor to obesity is the fact that schools that were designed as walking neighborhood schools are no longer. All of those are a concern for where we locate it. When the bond was passed six years ago, the expectation was that it would be located on the district campus, north of 19th Street and east of Madison. Then with the city's cooperation, we engaged in a transaction that allowed us to acquire the Army and Navy properties lying to the extreme eastern edge of the district campus. If we don't rebuild D Elementary on the proposed site, the only other available site to us is on the district campus. And you can see from the map, it's to the extreme northeast corner of that area. You can see the large empty zone, that's where the district campus is, and it would be on the northeast corner of that campus almost certainly. In my mind, that is simply an unsuitable location because the entirety of that, of the zone would lie to the south and to the west of the location of the school. And indeed, students that lived directly across the street from the school would be going to a different school. It's simply unsuitable to have that location. Students that lived directly across the street on Jackson would be going to the school above Harrison Taylor Canyon Elementary.
Would you have to bus the students if it was located up by the administration?
We would have to bus some students and we currently bus a few students presently to D, although only one bus route. We would have to increase the amount of busing. And I'm not sure where the mile and a half radius is, but it's, it would increase the amount of busing with that relocation.
The other project, or problem we have is that Monroe's a, could be a barrier and it's the safety of the children.
Monroe's a barrier, Washington's a barrier. Yeah, we have several barrier streets, including some east-west streets as well. And that's certainly an issue.
How often do you adjust the boundaries for the individual schools?
As infrequently as we can possibly get away with.
How often do you do that?
It has been done once in the past 30 years. And that was about five years ago or six years ago. And you may recall, Councilmember Wicks, that it was a matter of frankly substantial controversy. People become very accustomed to the school boundaries and school zones and even shifting the boundary by one street is extraordinarily disruptive for folks.
One more quick question before you go on. So with the proposed site, are you still going to have to bus any of the students or...
The extent to which we have to bus will not vary with the proposed site because we're literally moving a half a block to the north, I mean, pardon me, to the east. And so, yes, we will still be running a bus route, but it won't increase the busing. There, as I said, you can see from the map, just by where residential property is, it's apparent where kids are being bused from, that from that zone between Washington and Wall to the north and then east of, or pardon me, west of Wall. And there are relatively few students that live in that area west of Wall. The throw weight, if I can use that term for this area, is really Washington to Jackson. That's where more than 90% of the students live. In this case, then, the question becomes, in my mind, what are the synergies to be achieved between a partnership of the city and the district? We're in a new place. My district is changing substantially. Our mantra is, we expect something substantially different than we've ever expected before and therefore we must do things that are substantially different than we've ever done before. We're reforming our education. It's changing and it's changing for the better. I know the city is engaged in a similar process. And it is appropriate altogether... And it is appropriate altogether in my mind that we accept the synergies of both of those change processes. In my mind, there are several synergies that are obtained by this process, by this project. Number one, students of poverty have a school that they can walk to that will challenge them and provide an educational opportunity they have never had, both in terms of a new school and more importantly in terms of a STEM magnet. That's one piece of synergy. A second synergy, there's an equity issue for my students that attend D Elementary. As it's presently constituted, it has by far the smallest playground and outdoor facilities of any elementary school in our district. The recommendation is that a new elementary school should have between 12 and 15 acres. There is no other 15 acre parcel, but what we have here is by a judicious combination of city and district resources, we actually are carving out what is effectively a 15 acre parcel for students to use. In my mind, that has multiple pieces of synergy associated with it. Number one, a park that is underutilized and during the day, almost never utilized, obtains use. Unproductive property is put to use. Second, a school that would remain vacant after school becomes a community school and becomes an asset to the community. Third, and maybe most importantly and maybe most subtly, there is a joint statement from the city and the district to our community that we are dedicated to doing things better, more efficiently and more effectively. There is a synergy there that is unlike anything we've ever had in this city as long as I've lived here. I also have one other request. I believe it's important that we speak with a unanimous voice to our community. It is not lightly that we undertake the notion of engaging in eminent domain proceedings. It's not lightly at all. But of all of the various uses for which eminent domain is a legitimate and legal use, schools are the quintessential example of appropriate condemnation use. And so for all of those reasons, I would ask you to support the proposed memorandum of understanding and interlocal agreement. Can I answer any other questions?
I have one. We talked to Mr. Ogden about the city's responsibility financially. What is the school district's financial program?
As presently estimated, and that's all we have is a working estimate, the present estimate for a four-section STEM magnet with a community school piece would be $19 million. As I sit here today, that's a little too rich for my blood. And so it would be the last elementary school we built, which was also a unique partnership between the school district and the city, was Shadow Valley Elementary School. And it cost about $14 million. That included about $2 million or so of special site preparation because it's, as you know, on a hillside. We wouldn't have any of those sorts of issues here. So it will be somewhere between 12 and $19 million would be the bracket.
And what type of funding are you looking at then?
All I can get.
All you can get then?
There are three primary ways. Number one, in our capital reserves, we have somewhere in the vicinity of $10 million in actual cash. And we would use that for the initial acquisition of the land, which we estimate would be somewhere between $2 and $3 million. Second, we have, as Mr. Ogden represented to you, the notion of new market tax credits, which is a quite complicated and intensive way that essentially, as he indicates, develops some equity in the property and essentially allows us to plow somewhere between 15 and 20% of the total cost of the project and to simply receive that by way of equity. Obviously, we don't pay taxes, you don't pay taxes, and it's a way of taking the tax credit that would otherwise be generated and turning that into equity. Third, would be bonding, but that would be the least attractive for us at this point because we have other bonding plans at some point in the future. But there are, as you know, a variety of bonds, including lease revenue bonds or other bonds that would not require a public vote. And we would explore all of that in order to complete the school timely.
Superintendent, you mentioned the park. And I think there are several very good examples throughout the city where we have done this, even in the, you know, recently. St. Joseph Elementary is a private school, but we've worked in a very synergistic way with the city to use Monroe Park. Odyssey Elementary is another one where we've used the park to really benefit the children and to, like you mentioned, to get a very good use out of that park, especially during the weekdays, Monday through Friday. And then I've personally seen families then use that for weekend events. And so, you know, I was pleased to hear how you're using that. Another question that has come up to my attention is the naming of the school. D Elementary School has a rich heritage. I'm personally an alumni of the first D Elementary School on 20th. And I know there's some interests...
I would be tempted to call that the old D Elementary and soon to be the old, old D Elementary.
And so I know that's very important to some citizens that we maintain that relationship with the D family and that heritage. So I don't know if that's the plan to continue to call it D Elementary School or...
I don't know that we've... We have not had discussions or review of what that would look like. I know that's been the tradition in the past. I don't know that there's a strong reason to deviate from that. We simply haven't got that far in the process. I suppose if there were a donor who wanted naming rights, that would be something we would explore. But it simply hasn't been a matter of discussion nor am I aware of anybody prepared to buy those rights for the price I would expect to sell them for.
Thank you, sir.
Can I answer any other questions? Thank you and thank you for all you do for our city.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll accept public input on the Ogden School District interlocal agreement.
Chair Blair and Council, I appreciate this time. I don't have all the good facts and figures in front of me to share with you, but I do have experience with education for the last four years being on the school board. And I speak for myself, not on behalf of the board, but we as a board pretty much act together in a lot of the things that we do. And I heard some comments that, well, what about the money? You know, what are we going to have to put forward? And it would be very convenient for us as a school board to save money and put that on the district campus property. But it's not about saving money and it's not about what's convenient for the schools. It's about education. And as you look at the students and as Superintendent described, the poverty and the students that attend that school and we can approve them or improve their education, that's good and that's great. And that's what we want to do for our future. But we are also looking at the here and the now. And as you look at a community school, and a community school is something that brings the community together and makes it stronger. And as we take that, not only do the students attend that school, it becomes the community center. And the successful community schools entitle more than just education for students. They entail creating a place for education for the parents. And if you look at the education level of the parents within this community, I bet that you will see that a majority of them do not have a high school education, do not have the education to help them improve in the community. And as we build a community center where we can teach those parents how to build themselves up, how to build their children up and get them comfortable in coming to school, they will in turn make sure their students get to school. And that's what building the school in the middle of this location is about. It might be a few thousand dollars on an appraisal or it might be who's going to pay for tearing down the school. We could save a couple of million dollars by building it on the district campus, but it's not about that couple of million dollars. It is about how we build our students in this city and how we build our families in this city. And that is what will make us stronger as a community and as a city. Thank you.
Travis Pate, many of you know me. Primarily my thought, I think it's a phenomenal idea and concept and I applaud the district and the city for getting together with an interlocal agreement. However, I feel that the site should follow all the plans outlined in the central community development plan, which that it faces the street, it'd be user-friendly, it's part of the neighborhood, that we have some review and design inputs. I outlined a few items that primarily with regards to just the map. I don't understand why we're not following our own city guidelines with shared parking. There's a parking lot immediately west of the site and the school district, I mean Ogden City owns the parallel parcels. So this entire parcel is owned by Ogden City. There are three parcels. Why are we not allowing, so to speak, the integrity of a church to remain on the corner as a community building tool across from a park? They bought for that same reason. And then also the housing that could possibly be and let stay and remain on 22nd Street. I believe that that complements the other side of 22nd Street more so because the way it faces the street versus just a scrape clean, let's start over from scratch. There's... Ogden has a great history of community schools and several of them still stand, including the original D and the original Madison School. This is a picture also of the demolition of the Five Points School. And I don't know how you focus that, but it's just primarily, that's just the parcel that I think is a very important part of the property and it can just be taken out. The entire, any property that faces 22nd Street, with the exception of also the church which faces Madison Avenue. I believe that parcel should be left out and shared parking should be approached with the LDS Church, with Integrity Christian Church. And with Ogden City already owning a big chunk. That lot is 330 feet deep that Ogden City owns. I don't understand why we're not following our own plans while doing this. School districts and other places seem to like they have their autonomy, just as similar to the post office, the Mount Ogden Post Office. Oh, well, what are they going to build up there? How are they going to put it into site? You know, those types of things. I think this is a tremendous opportunity. I think we should go forward with the plan, but it's not a scrape of the entire five acres west of the park. It's the reuse and proper infill and community design standards that would put us as a neighborhood community school. And not selling the naming rights, but showing respect to the D family and keeping the name. I also have those questions. I'll hand that through the packet that says what needs to happen, what I feel and my other questions with regards to the planning process and how to incorporate that as a full neighborhood school. But I'd say go forward if it can be amended to address the partial issues.
Thank you, Travis.
Sorry, and just one side note. When Mr. D passed away and his funeral procession came from the family home along Washington Boulevard, all the schoolchildren met him at the bridge and walked with that procession to the tabernacle. That's a tribute to the first superintendent of the schools. I don't think it's a name that's for sale. I think it's one that should be honored and respected.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travis. Any others, other comments?
Hello, Chair and City Council. It's good to see your smiling faces this evening. We're all energized and ready to go. I'm Jeremy Peterson. I live at 2227 Jefferson Avenue. I live a stone's throw from the current D Elementary School. And so tonight, I come to you not as a state representative, but as a citizen to support this measure. But before I get into that, let me just give you a brief report from the Capitol. Ogden has regained a lot of its respect. We have made a tremendous effort as a community to rebuild and revitalize and to improve our community. And I have many, many people come up to me who have not been to our community in years or in decades in some cases, and they are shocked at what they see when they arrive. You know, it surprises me that people have taken this long to come back to our community to see it. But the word is getting out and our hard work is paying off and that tenacity and fortitude is changing attitudes and perceptions. But not all of our work is done. A few of you were able to attend the League of Cities and Towns luncheon in Salt Lake at the Salt Palace. And I saw a few of you there. They loaded us up in buses at the Capitol to get us down to that event. And on the bus was a homeless lady. And she looked a little, you know, out of place given everyone that was on the bus. And I sat next to her and struck up a conversation with her. And I was asking her where she was from and it eventually came out that she was homeless. And I said, oh, well, you know, I'm sorry to hear that. And then we kind of shifted the conversation and she was asking me questions. And she's like, well, where are you from? And I said, well, I'm from Ogden. She's like, oh, I'm sorry. And so we still have some more work to do. Perceptions and attitudes haven't changed everywhere. I thought that was a funny story, but... All right, well, you know, I work in the real estate business. I, you know, I've, I live in the heart of this elementary school district and neighborhood. I've seen the economic cycle that drives the neighborhood, the demographics that drive it. It is my opinion that the school district, the Ogden School District itself, is the last piece of the puzzle that is going to provide vitality and a self-sustaining neighborhood in this part of our city. For a while now, we've been throwing sod on concrete and adding lots of water hoping to keep it green. Fixing the school district, and it's on its way, is providing fresh soil, nutrients, rich soil for our community to grow in and to... Is that my time? Oh, my word. Okay.
Thank you.
Can you give me one more minute before you kick me off? All right. Well, the first thing, school's a bad design. It's an institution of learning masquerading as a detention center. You know, that concrete monolith that we heard about. Secondly, replacing the school is a symbol for our community. And thirdly, it makes economic sense demographically and socially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comment?
I wasn't going to get up because I'm not pressed for it. Sorry, I've been working early in the morning. My name is Randy Layton. I have properties in this area and, and you know what? I wish we would have been told about this meeting because I'm very impressed with what the school district and what the city are doing. And you know what? They are our future leaders, the kids that live in this area, and I think we need to serve them. I know that there are different ideas on how to do it and everything else, but I've worked in school districts when the... Education is my major and I taught school for years and I've been in a lot of places. I don't see a school where your parking is clear on one end or something is on your campus or anything else. I just want to express my opinion. I'm impressed with what was presented today. I'll give up my property and you can do what you want with it. But I, you know what? If you're going to do something to make a change and the downtown changes that are coming about, don't do something with a glob in the middle of something or else. That's my recommendation. You guys need to, you know, make your choice. But I see a great proposal and I see Ogden City making some changes and beautifying itself and becoming a great community. And I think, you know what? Get the people in their support. I wish we would have known about it so more neighbors would have came. I heard through the grapevine and wanted to know what was happening. But I recommend that you take a serious look at what the school district and what the city has proposed and give it that support.
Mr. Layton?
I'm Megan Porter. I'm also a tenant. I live on 652 Oak Street and I've been there for about five years. I don't know if you're familiar with the existing street. It's probably the only dirt road that still exists in Ogden. It's private property. City will not come out and help us with any of the sewer problems. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I guess I'd just like to make the comment to commend the school district, the superintendent, the school board, and the city. I think it's a pretty unique partnership, and I think that a lot of thinking and creativity has gone into this, so I would say good luck, and if there's no further discussion...
I'd just also like to, you know, Governor Herbert recently mentioned the importance of education, and I believe that we must, and it's our duty, to focus on meeting the needs of children. And I think these children, especially in this area, need the best that we can provide for them and to help them in many times get out of some difficult situations that are not just their generation, but sometimes second and third generations. And whatever we can do to focus on the children, help them, to give them the best start possible, I think is extremely important for us.
Mr. Chair, I think we need to address what Travis was asking. I'm sure the school district looked at the present location of D and found out that there had been some flaws in that, where that school is. Did you look at the D location, the original location?
The original D location?
Uh huh.
Yeah, absolutely. The difficulty with that particular location is it's about a third of the block, so it's roughly four to, less than five acres. There's no area there to build the school on the half that's not occupied while we still occupy the school. The children would have no playground. There's no access off of the other street, off of 20th Street, or 21st Street, whichever one is on the north end of that. And it wouldn't be feasible to do a design and build the school while the school remains in session, and we don't have excess capacity in the district that we could absorb 500 students and simply close D down. None of those are viable alternatives. And so the site itself is, and as I said, the recommendation is that an elementary school have between 12 and 15 acres, and so we would put a new building there, and in any event, it would have inadequate, it would be inadequate in terms of recommended size from the day it opened.
Now, is the new school larger than the present D school?
It almost certainly would be somewhat larger. Certainly, the notion of having it face the street and having those design elements, we want to produce a first-class school that looks well and fits into the community and is an asset to the community. We certainly don't want this cement Millennium Falcon plopped down on another school. There are some designs that we've roughed out. Certainly, the notion about the shared parking is well-taken. It's difficult to have the conversations with the adjoining, with the LDS Church that owns that parking lot to the west of this half-block until we know we have a deal. It would be great to be able to sit down with them and, as was indicated, utilize shared parking resources if that can be worked out, utilize some unique access points. Certainly, we don't want to have acres and acres of asphalt if we can avoid that. As far as the utilizing the entire block versus a portion of the block, one of the difficulties with that right off the top is ending up with the same area, perhaps roughly five acres, but having it be in an L shape will make development of the property for a school purpose almost impossible. The long rectangular shape is challenging on its own, but having it L-shaped would be very, very difficult. Certainly, other aspects to make it aesthetically pleasing are something that we would be committed to exploring and working with folks on.
Yeah. I knew the school district looked at that. It's probably the first project that you looked at to see if it was feasible, but it just doesn't have the capacity to do that.
Yes, and that was some years ago when the second, when the successful bond passed.
Thank you.
Other questions I can answer? Thank you.
If there's no further discussion...
Further discussion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the interlocal agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner to adopt proposed Resolution 2013-2, and a second from Vice Chair Garner. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wiggs?
No.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes.
I'll give the reason for my no vote. The Ogden School District campus is several blocks and less than four tenths of a mile away from the current D school. A vast majority of the students live above Washington. The school boundary was actually changed in 2010, so it's not unheard of to change those. I think we have an opportunity to build a great community school without taking properties through eminent domain, and eminent domain should be a tool of last resort. And I don't think in this situation that it is a last resort when you have a property that's so close that would be a viable alternative. I disagree with using city staff and resources to that end, so that's the reason for my no vote.
I would just like to thank everyone that worked on this and wish you good luck, and thank you for all for being here. Next up is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding your concerns or ideas. Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. In this form of government, all city personnel are the responsibility of the administration, not the council. Please discuss any concerns you may have regarding staff with the mayor, chief administrative officer, or department directors. Thank you.
Hi, Travis Pate. I feel it's unfortunate the superintendent just skedaddled in the sense that some of the aspects of, have we seen the shapes of the most recent schools that we've built? To say an L shape wouldn't work. Just say, a concrete Millennium Falcon, when MHTN architects that just built the Shadow Valley School incorporated a big spherical earth rotunda, sounds like D's main floor, curved carpeted risers, sounds like D's main floor. So to say we're not coming full circle, the architects have used those images on their website to say, here's what we can do. It's already at D school. So I, my take would be really consider a possibility or potential for the reuse of the building for the unique architectural purposes in and of itself. We just landed on the moon the year before, and we built a spaceship the next year. I mean, it does sound a little awkward, but there is, I think, a national remark to that. As I said before, John Pierce, the son of Ebers Pierce, designed the library, Wever High School, the new St. Benedict's, just fairly prolific aspects, and made it and created a lot of subdivisions with his father. From the day it was started, this school was not suitable for education of its children. Have Mrs. Glenn come here, have Phyllis Savage come here, and talk to the superintendent about whether it's suitable. Have Shayla Alejandre, who is one of my classmates, that's now an administrator with Ogden City Schools, that came here as an immigrant child, ask if that school's suitable. Have my four brothers and sisters, a microbiologist, a radiologist, medical sales, technical sales, and community development, have us tell you whether that school's suitable. It's not the school, it's the opportunity and instructors. From the day of, this building was superseded, the building before the town hall. He says, 20 years ago, Ogden was a village; 10 years ago, she was a town; now she's blossoming into a city. It is true that we may be called a second-class city, but we are on the broadest sense of first-class city. Upon this square, as they dedicated the original city hall in 1889, David Eccles and H. H. Richards to begin, he says, 10 or 20 years, he says, "We will need and we will see a city hall 10 or 20 years that will not cost $50,000, original cost, but $200,000. The businesses will be adequate to require it. When people abroad see what we have confidence in our future, this place will be chosen by them as the spot they wish to live and die upon. And thus, the next two years, the advertising this city hall will give the city will bring capital here that will pay the city more than it ever paid for the hall."
Thank you.
And I think the same thing with the new school.
Thank you.
But I really think that this, that property should be looked at for neighborhood alignment and match the East Central Community Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think Ogden is a great place to live. My name is Kevin Irons, and I'd like to address my concerns to the mayor, if that's okay. Mayor, I went to the Ogden City Justice Center today to answer the charges of trespassing, trespassing at the Ogden City Justice Center. And when I got there, they offered me some kind of a deal, I don't know, with some different language used, and it was basically a plea and a bane. So I didn't want to take the plea because I didn't trespass at my courthouse, our courthouse, or your courthouse. So the judge, I'm there for a hearing, and the judge didn't listen to the case, didn't hear the case, and set it for a trial without even hearing the case. And now it's set for sometime at the end of May, so I'm waiting six months in order for my case to be heard by a judge. And I would just like to have some, you know, some kind of justice done here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
One more thing.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Was there any agenda for a safe crosswalk between 20th Night...
Thank you.
...and 26th Street on Wall Avenue? Is there anything on the agenda for that?
Not tonight. We'll look into that. Thank you.
There should be a safe crosswalk down there for people to cross.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
Next is comments from the administration.
I do have a couple of quick comments. I want to commend our staff and our department on the hard work they've done for this really unique project. There was a quote in Prosperity 2020 that said, "The Utah that once was is increasingly no more, and our economy, as it melds with the forces of globalization, is picking winners and losers. Countries, states, and individuals that don't lead change will be left behind." And I think this type of leadership from all of you and the school district and everyone else is that type of change that's going to lead people. And I think we're correct with Representative Peterson and some others. People appreciate what we've been able to do and some of these unique partnerships, so I appreciate your leadership and vision with that. I think it's going to be a huge, huge deal for those 650 kids that will be intimately impacted by this and a safe place to learn and be educated for the rest of their lives. And so I applaud you all for your leadership and the efforts that have come together to put that together. One other thing, kind of a wow piece, Forbes in the last year has recognized Ogden as a really unique community in three different ways. Today, we found we were rated as one of the top 20 fastest-growing cities in the U.S. We had good company with Seattle, Portland, Austin, San Jose, San Francisco, all of these other real high-level communities we hear and read about all the time, and Ogden was nestled comfortably in with that type of company, which I think is a great thing. Also, best places to raise a family. Part of this is the commitment and the partnership with the school district. I think that will always be a huge factor. And then best places for business and to start a career. And all of that comes down to this type of leadership and education and this type of partnerships. It's a huge commitment we've got, and I appreciate everybody that's put so much time and energy and effort into this. I think it will be, as they've said a number of different times, a game changer for that part of the community that desperately needs it. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Council staff?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
And council members?
I agree with the mayor that this is a part of the puzzle that we need to look at, the eastern part of Ogden. We've spent millions and millions of dollars trying to improve that area, and this will have such an impact that will benefit not only the neighborhood, but also benefit the city and the central city. It will enhance our opportunity there. I thought the superintendent addressed it very well when he says, "We're giving the education opportunity for the kids that they've never had." And that's the key issue. Plus, we have a community center in a community, and I think those two elements are key in producing this effective project. The other aspect is, is that we're partnering with Ogden City Schools, and we, as the mayor knows and the city administration knows, we go out and invite businesses to come in and look and hopefully relocate in Ogden. And if we can have a vibrant and a strong education program that adds to our opportunity to attract these businesses into our area and to give our opportunity for high-paying jobs and employment in our community. So it's an investment, as I see it, from Ogden City to be part of this project, and I think it's very beneficial for us. The superintendent also says, "We can do things better and more effectively," and this is part of that process that we're looking at. We need to do things better. We need to use our parks to their most efficient aspect, and this is an opportunity in that area to do so. And so I'm pleased to vote affirmative in this resolution.
Thank you.
Any other?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Garner to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. And just as a reminder, an Ogden City Council work session will be held in the council work room immediately following the city council meeting. The purpose of the work session is to discuss proposed demolition by neglect ordinance, FY 2012 budget carryforward, and council business. Thank you.